Hey, we're getting ready to go.
We don't know what development's gonna look like yet.
I'll call this regular session to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to invite citizens for a public comment. Come on up, Tony. Please state your name.
Hi, my name's Antonia Doggett, otherwise known as Tony. I work at the St. Helens Marina. And I decided to come down here today because I believe that we have a serious problem on the waterfront. I'm talking about the transient liverboard boats that we have. I made some notes and I'll try to keep it brief.
Okay.
I sit down at the marina every day, pretty much. We're open eight to five, seven days a week, and I'm there most of the time. Otherwise, I'm at the marina on my boat. So we've been watching this for three years now. Three years. So St. Helens used to be a boating destination, but as of this year, boaters have said...
Could we have it quiet in the chambers while we're having testimony? And if you'd like to go outside, that'd be fine. But right now, I'm having a hard time hearing this testimony the way I should.
Sorry about that, Tony.
No, that's okay. So I see and speak to a lot of boaters. I mean, obviously, they come here and they... yacht clubs, boats, recreational, everything, from ski boats to large boats to... Okay, so we've called the city repeatedly, last year and the year before, to raise this issue and say it's becoming a problem. We gave up. Yacht clubs and boaters have said they have written to the city and called, and they've also given up. So they've decided to not make this their destination anymore. If you haven't noticed, how quiet it is out there. And pretty much, the only boaters out there now are the transients. Okay, so there are three sunk boats in the channel that should have never sunk. They were stripped and everything taken off to sell for whatever they could get from. We've seen them towing boats, leaving them either on Sand Island or in the channel, or I've heard they're behind Bachelor Island, too. The sheriff says that they can't do anything because the stay at the dock is 14 days. So 14 days at the city dock, 14 days at the Sand Island dock. And look, nobody begrudges people living on their boats. That's fine. However, if you make this your primary habitat and domicile, you're gonna run everybody else off. And this river is 1,900 miles long. Go somewhere else. Enjoy the river somewhere else. There's a dump sailboat on Sand Island that's been there for weeks with no current registration. They're giving rides to the island and charging people for that. And we're having to go pick them up because obviously, there's no water source over there because they just leave them there. The only trash on the island right now is a direct result of that. The bathrooms on the island were vandalized last year, and I talked to the electrician that replaced the stolen LED lights and everything else, and he said it cost the city $2,000 to repair. I don't know if this is true. This is what he told me. As far as we know, the intent of these docks is to be for boaters to enjoy, to come to St. Helens to enjoy their time and not be harassed, intimidated, worried that if they leave their boat, it's gonna get ransacked or stuff stolen off it. Enforcement should be required of these people as people come into our marina and say, "Why should I register my boat?" or "Do all the legal stuff I have to do." And they don't. Well, I don't have an answer for that. So there's many things that can be enforced that these people are required to carry on their boats or have that the rest of us have or are required to have. That would be one way to at least not make it so comfortable because they're very comfortable right now. Look, if you acquiesce this waterfront to these people, this is just the drip because the tsunami from Portland is coming. And I can't say it enough that we have... You have to nip this in the bud now or you're gonna lose this waterfront. The life will be sucked out of it. These boats will be tied up to pilings, to whatever, all along this riverfront. And I didn't mean to come here today because of the urban renewal thing. I didn't even know that was going on. I just came because it's time for something to change, seriously. Brad and I have decided we can at least make it less hospitable for them by not selling them anything, not that they come in and buy anything really anyway. They drive past multiple times and never buy gas. And yet, we have gas siphoned out of the boats, gas cans stolen. I'm not trying to pin it on any person, but the correlation of the two has been too convenient. Okay, and I think the boaters are so tired of watching this now that they've just given up. I give up, really, actually. And I think that the boaters should be able to come and enjoy their time here and not feel unsafe. They won't go to Sand Island because there's no help close if something goes wrong or they just don't feel safe. They feel intimidated. And I just think it's a real shame that this is happening. One of our tenants put his boat on the dock for about four days while he was waiting for a slip to open up, and it was broken into and ransacked. Like I said, these people don't bring anything to this town. They don't work here. They don't pay taxes here. They don't... they just stay.
They do work here, just the wrong kind of work.
Well, yeah. I don't know what they do, but... The reasons that the boaters told me they don't come, and this is my last point, is this is what they said. They feel unsafe, particularly on Sand Island where help's not close. They don't want their kids around these people. These people knock on their boats in the middle of the night when they're drunk. They join in events they're not invited to. They want rides back and forth from and to and from the island. I used to take my boat over there and putter over to work and go back over to enjoy it, but I won't leave my boat over there unattended. They come in and try to intimidate me in the store, and that's fine. I don't want to be the face of this. I hope that there's something we can do whether working with the marine board to maybe change the long stay. I mean, 14 days is kind of ridiculous, I think. I know it's a state law, so I don't know how to address that. But I'm sure that the marine board and the city pay for these docks and, you know, people want to come to the restaurants, but they don't want to walk up to the restaurant while they're surrounded by people staring at them, wondering when they're gonna leave. And the fish camp across the Lewis River is done there. It's been totally taken over by drug addicts, meth, overpopulation of people there. The fishermen have left there. I don't know if you all know that, but... And we just can't acquiesce this river... This is the jewel and the crown for St. Helens. We cannot acquiesce this to these people. So if they want to be a pirate, go be a pirate. I don't know, that way or that way, or go anchor somewhere. Nobody begrudges you that.
You know, it's like we feel our hands are... as if our hands are tied because we do have a, I think it's a minimum, is it seven days, five days, that they can park?
And then that includes if you stay here five days, you can't go over to Sand Island and stay five days, too. So it's both docks.
It's a total of 10 days during the month, but only five consecutive. And consecutive means...
Okay, well, there's some of them being...
Then code enforcement is who has to deal with that.
But there needs to be follow-up. When there's enforcement... If there's no follow-up to the enforcement, then it's pointless because they just... and the word in the boating community spreads very quickly between them. They're living on a different plane than the rest of us are. They consider themselves to be pirates, and it's a lifestyle choice that they've made.
Yeah, you're totally right, Tony. It's a huge problem. And you talked about the tsunami from Portland. That's what that is already. That's the people...
This is just the drip.
That's the people they kicked out of.
Right.
So I called the police the other day about the sunken boats. I mean, the other day, it's been probably three, four weeks ago. The marine patrol came out, looked at them, and they basically said that that whole deal with that for till of homeless people is being handled by the state police. So that's what I know about that.
Okay.
It's not solving our problem, obviously, but that's what...
So Tony, yeah, I don't mean to interrupt, but this is an excellent, excellent time. And the timing is just perfect for you to step forward as a citizen and do this testimony. Go deliver it. One of the things that I think we could fix that. We have the power to do that with this council. I do believe, working with a marine board, working with this problem, I think that we have the ability to fix that. We've got to fix it for our taxpayers. Our city taxpayers are paying for those docks and paying for those facilities as well. We have got to fix it. And I think that the boating community, representatives from the boating community like yourself and Brad, need to sit down with our police chief, our public works, maybe a couple of members on the council, county sheriff. Now, we have got to draft an ordinance that directs some... That has a little bit of teeth into that ordinance so that we can go forward with it. So we've listened to this long enough, and we just sit here and listen. We've got to do something. So I'm gonna direct staff to do something. And I'm sorry, I've got to apologize for interrupting, but I'm afraid this would get away if I didn't. So I...
The state, yeah, if the state police, they're out there all the time because they come to the docks for gas. So I talk to them a lot. But I think the basic enforcement, if you have dragging a dinghy behind you that doesn't have a motor, it still has to have an invasive species tag. I mean, if this is stuff they enforce on all the rest of the boaters, then they need to enforce this on these people because they're getting away with it. And the police, I think, think because they can't get revenue from these people, which is true. However, if you make their life uncomfortable, then they'll go somewhere else.
The big problem is, Tony, and it's not necessarily an excuse, but the problem is right now is our police force is down a third of their people. We only have two people on shift most of the time.
We've got the county.
To cover the whole city. And they can't... to get after these guys, you would have to sit there and watch them 24/7. Would be the only way to catch them doing something.
Well, even if you send somebody down there every other day while they were sitting there and say, "I want to see your fire extinguishers," they don't like the police. And they don't like the police for a reason because they feel uncomfortable because they know what they're doing.
They have been going down there some, and they give them excuses, you know? Same excuses they give everybody else. They've got the whole line all figured out, you know, and everything.
So there's a whole nother set of rules, though, that you have to follow when you're on the water.
Oh, yeah.
They do not apply to...
To them.
To them, partially, but there's also a whole nother legal aspect of what you can and cannot do on a vessel. Like, police cannot board a vessel. Only people that can is coast guard. That is true.
Right, so the fact...
The state marine board is kind of with their, probably their laws, has probably, even though they want them out of there because the Portland yards would like to come down, and I'm sure they've complained, but it's their laws that are actually protecting these guys.
Oh, sure, I know. And they know the laws, and they're gonna get their rights. But by the fact that they... anybody that charges somebody to take somewhere on their boat, somewhere, I believe, the coast guard can impound your boat for the same reason that you had to have a captain to take Sand Island. Right, that's why you couldn't charge to take the people on the shuttle over there because you had to have a sanctioned coast guard captain.
One of the things, just as an example, we had a problem at McCormick Park with needles. We had a problem with trash. We had a problem with all of that homeless issue in McCormick Park. Do you know what we did?
You closed...
We closed it. We closed it to camping. So yes, we do have the power to close Sand Island if it gets out of hand. We have all kinds of things that we can do. We just need some people to think outside the box and give us some ideas of what we can do.
Well, Brad and I are happy to work with you guys because it's affecting our business, the business of the marina. And I don't know about the restaurants and the boaters not coming, but...
Thank you so much for bringing our attention. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Tony.
And Tony, I'm more down there, so I will talk to you a little bit more about this. I just don't want to lead you in the wrong direction and put out something that we think we can do and we may find out we can't do. So I will continue to let you know what's going on.
To make sure that you guys see how bad this has become.
Epic problem. I'm on that river a lot, you know.
And there's no boaters, recreational boaters that are coming here anymore. They've made that very clear.
Yep. I haven't seen them in a while either.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for the time.
I just had one comment that I wanted to let her know, Tony, that the city docks down here, the ones on this shore, we have a guy that goes down there every day of the week except for weekends, and he writes down all the license numbers. And if anybody's over the stay, then he turns it into the code enforcement. And yes, we've had some people there longer and they've been cited. And one guy like this took off to California and left his boat here and gave us 50 bucks with a letter and said so. And then the hardest part about that is just to get somebody to tow his boat away. There's a whole big process to do that. But I just wanted to let you know, we do...
Yeah.
But we do write down their license number on this site anyway because it's available to us.
Okay, any other visitor comment?
Hello, I'm Carmen Dunn. I was here last time with the whole new complex on Vernonia, and I just wanted to follow up with you guys and see if you've brainstormed at all for changes to anything that the city has in its, I don't know if it's ordinances or code, to ensure that if something like this comes up again, the voice of the community members is heard so that this doesn't happen again. So green space in developments, sidewalks on Vernonia is another huge thing on my list that I'm gonna keep bugging you guys about.
And we all agreed on that. We all agreed on that.
I just wanted to follow up and see, like, has there been additional discussion on the sidewalks on Vernonia? What's the plan?
Yes.
It has. We had somebody come in, and our planning commission actually okayed him to build a house without sidewalks. And so we kind of went ballistic on that. And so we're gonna start forming a... we have a little kitty going on, too. That is on our project list.
Awesome. I'm glad you're there.
As a, somebody that has two kids in school, there's a few areas in the community that are kind of, in my mind, targets as dangerous for kids to cross streets. And I've talked to Jacob, the planning commissioner, planning director, about, you know, what kind of trigger do we have about how many more units can we have in this neighborhood before it forces a crosswalk? You know, do we have those kind of things that would tip the scale? And he's like, "No, I have not thought about that." And I said, "Maybe something like that." You know, we're definitely having that conversation and looking that as density increases and population increases, there's just more cars on the road in St. Helens than there's ever been. And so we just have to have those conversations in every neighborhood, not just on Vernonia.
Definitely. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it's not getting lost and that it's getting followed up on. Another thing that I just wanted to bring up is I noticed that the library had a super awesome sleepover, animal sleepover this week. And I wish I had known about it sooner because it's really great, and I hope you guys continue to do that. So, yeah.
Thank you. Yep. Okay, any other citizen comment? Okay, deliberation of the adoption of the proposed St. Helens Urban Renewal Plan. So, like I said, I know that the former mayor, Randy Peterson, worked really hard on this, too, getting this going, and you as a council. And I think it's a good thing. I think it's a step in the right direction of what this city... It's almost the only way that we could really do this thing with what we really want to do, the vision, the long-term vision. And for people, they need to understand that this is a vision of 25 years out and that to be patient and let this thing happen.
You know how they say, "Timing is everything."
Yes.
The last time we ran this up the flagpole, we had this place full every time. And I mean, I guess I could say Lorelai did a great job on it, which she did.
Yes, sir.
It was a much more open process this time, too.
Nobody's even... don't guess it. So, no, this is, and it's timing, the last time was just before the recession, so it was actually a good thing that we didn't do it. So it turned out really good, and timing is everything. So, yeah.
Well, I agree with the timing. It's a very real appraisal as well. And I like what I heard tonight about the flexibility that's assured to us as we move along. And I think that's a very positive thing. We didn't hear anything negative from the taxing districts that you would normally hear. And that's with the exception that some of those individuals wanted to be on part of the board. And one of the things that I really liked about, I think, is Matt Dougherty, who testified that he liked what he saw. And we had several people giving very positive comments to what they've seen thus far in the process. And that came about by, just not this council, but councils before. I mean, the councils changed. And for the most part, the city council is the one who has kick-started this, who has had the vision to do this, to go forward with the waterfront development, to go forward with these things. And to hear some people say that they have a total zero lack of confidence with the council just doesn't make sense to me. I could argue with that for... It just doesn't make sense. I think it's a false accusation and accuse that something that we don't own. I think we've put our best foot forward and have had really good results with community input and with the entire process thus far. And hopefully, I see nothing but a positive outcome from our efforts. And I just wanted to say that, just to clear the record.
I think having taken the time and having such an open process and having good leadership, thank you, has helped a lot. I think that bringing the special districts in from the beginning and including them helped. And I think the fact that there wasn't a lot of negativity tonight is a testimony to the fact that people actually do have confidence in us when we're open with them.
It's a testimony to our presenters and the people who've worked really hard on this as well.
John or Jenny? Anything?
I don't have anything to add. You know, Jenny did a lot of work, but having come on the council in '08 or in 2012, it's a long time. Just looking at all the effort John has done to bring the different grants here, the prolonged, extended, huge investment that we did in the community with Estat. Having talked to the community, previous efforts at urban renewal, people didn't feel included. It was a vague idea. And I think that the Estat in particular, people felt like they were on the ground with the planning, and they felt like they had a voice. And the testimony bore that out. But people felt like, "We actually know what you want the money for now, so it makes sense." And I think that that's, again, just a huge teamwork from city staff of getting all the, you know, the ducks in the row, you know? Getting everybody on the same page, getting a shared vision that makes people feel better about writing the check. It's like, it makes sense to ask for the money now because we've seen the pictures. I think that that was a huge team effort from staff. And that's why we're here today with, you know, minimal dissenting opinion. Even the neutrals were minimal. And there were issues that could be answered and issues that we've all talked about. So I think that that's wonderful.
I'd kick-start on Keith and myself and staff, Sue and Neil, Kathy. A few of us in this room were here from kind of the get-go when that property, when we got word that Boise veneer property was to be up for sale. And at that time, that's when the vision started. And that was clear back in 2006, the last part of 2006, 2007, in there somewhere. And we've been nothing... The same vision and the same excitement of that time with Keith and myself on the council has translated to this whole room. I feel really good about that, so I kind of had to say that as well. So with the new mayor coming aboard and our two new councils, John and Matt, Jacob, all you folks have got aboard, and Jen especially, and our consultants. So it feels good.
Can I make a motion now?
Can I make one more? I'll make one comment on the... And I'm in complete agreement that, you know, it's a really big ask to ask a taxing district to forego some of their revenues so that you can entrust the city to spend it on projects. And it's been a long time in the making. The city's done a lot of work. And the lack of having, you know, nobody really fighting it, you know, we've addressed their concerns. They believe in it. They've seen the work we've done and believe in it. I think that's really encouraging and builds trust. The fire district made a comment about the composure of the board being better represented. And the board was created back in 2008 as part of the initial action. It was just the city council acting, you know, changing its hats and working as the urban renewal agency board. That's not going on deaf ears. We've addressed some of the aspects about having a well-defined plan and a process. There's some very basic administrative processes that make it much more simplified to have the way it is now to continue into the future. We can come out of this meeting, come into a different meeting. We don't have to break, have a meeting on a different day. It's just, it's more seamless. For that reason alone, I would not dramatically change it. But at the same time, I think having that stakeholder group close to the projects is a good thing. And anytime we have any changes to the plan, we want to make a good effort, like we've already done, to engage them and bring them to the table. Yeah, I think this is a tool in our toolbox to... Nicole's out there. I think this is a headline with something about making our dreams come true.
Now you may, Susan.
Okay. I'd like to move that we adopt the proposed St. Helens Urban Renewal Plan.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adopt the St. Helens Urban Renewal Plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? All right.
I want to... aye.
That's pretty much...
Where did that fit in?
Doug and Sue. Sue was the second. Susan.
She motioned, I seconded it.
Oh, you're right.
I just wanted to sound off.
He wanted to do the aye, yes.
I kind of raised my hand, but they...
He was a little bit late, so...
You were a little quick.
Okay, ordinance first reading. Here we go. Ordinance number 3217, an ordinance making a certain determination in findings relating to the approving the St. Helens Urban Renewal Plan and directing the notice of approval to be published. Resolution number 1793, a resolution to a... Uh, resolution number seventeen ninety-three, a resolution to adopt in presiding municipal court judge. A, oh, a point, excuse me, um, resolution number seventeen ninety-four, res-
No, 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 no. Move we adopt resolution number seventeen ninety-three.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to, uh, approve seventeen ninety-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, hearing none. Resolution number seventeen ninety-four, a resolution of common counsel of the city of St. Helens adopting the collective bargaining agreement with the St. Helens Police Association.
Move we adopt resolution number seventeen ninety-four.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution number seventeen ninety-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, award contract for the two M G concrete-
I think that's crossed off.
Oh, that is crossed off. That's, that'd be the line through it. And I think she told me earlier, it's been a long day, people. Okay. Uh, award purchase of Parks mower to Chinook Sales for, uh, rentals for, uh, retails for eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine.
I move we approve award purchase, uh, for the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve Chinook Sales rentals for eleven nine sixty-nine dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Okay, award contract for two thousand seventeen HMAC overlay of paving project, project to TFT construction for, uh, three hundred thousands, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three, thirty, hundred and eighty-eight and fifty-six cents.
I move we award item number ten as red.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded to approve item ten. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Okay, approve and authorize for signatures. A, personal service agreement with Cindy Phillips for judicial services. B, personal service agreement with Clayton Lance for prosecu- criminal services. C, out-call notification and alert services letter agreement with Columbia nine-one-one communication statistics for Columbia Alert Network System participation. D, contract with Duke Ru- Control, Inc. for sanitary sewer rerouting project and E, contract payments.
Move we approve and authorize for signature eleven A through E.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve eleven A through E. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda for acceptance. A, library board minutes dated April eighteenth and May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. B, planning commission minutes dated June night, or June thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. C, accounts payable bill list.
Move we accept consent agenda twelve A through C.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve twelve A through C. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Uh, okay, consent agenda for approval number thirteen. A, declare surplus property, one, two police vehicles, two, police car, lights, bars, sirens and control boxes. Dash three, W W T P equipment. B, exclusive use permit, coed softball at McCormick Park Fields, uh, one and two, June sixth through October twenty-second. C, street closure, pride parade, August twelfth, close Milton Way from DuBois Lane to St. Helen's Street. Close Columbia Boulevard from Milton Way to First Street and close First Street from Columbia Boulevard to Callet Street. Everybody get that? And then, uh, D, O L C C license, E, accounts payable bill list.
Um, discussion? Uh, the exclusive use permit on the softball fields.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's just a blanket? I mean, does that mean they, they get them whenever they want them? Right. Oh.
Now, didn't they destroy the fields last October? For some reason, I, I was told that the fields got pretty mangled up in, uh, October. Yeah, Neil?
Yeah.
But that's still, it's the same time every day? Is that, what, is that the way it is? And that's been our common practice all the time?
I think so. Yeah, I think so.
At other times?
Yep.
So, okay. Move we approve and consent, consent agenda thirteen A through E.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda thirteen A through E. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, uh, I, I have a couple of different things to talk about. And I guess first one on here is I did not see, um, I, I did not see anything about, uh, what I come up, talk to you about the, uh, community, uh, development impact for, um, a stipend that I talked to you about for John. Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that. Perfect. That's all I wanted to know. I wasn't sure where that was and I wanted to check in on that. And then, uh, second thing is Citizens Day in the park. Uh, it's gonna be, uh, August twelfth. Apparently there's a pride parade going on that day too. Um, but, uh, it starts at eleven AM and we'll be going, uh, starting out with a car show. And I got the fire department, the police department and the National Guard showing up for that too. Um, there'll be a bunch of, uh, different stores have donated to a barbecue that will be happening at one. The city has hired a DJ, DJ Richie Sanchez. Uh, he does, uh, he's gonna do all the genres, all the way up through. Um, and, uh, a lot of businesses stepped up and donated and then, uh, the staff has ordered us, uh, two hundred frisbees to throw out. So when we, you guys show up and I think roughly around one o'clock, we'll maybe take a break on the DJ and then make an announcement and then we all can pass out some frisbees for those who show up.
If I don't catch them, I can't do that.
And, uh, we're buying some other equipment and, and Walmart, if they have some year ending stuff, will actually donate, um, what they have too as well. But a lot of different, um, businesses stepped up. Uh, uh, I, if I, we're trying to name them all right now. There's a list of them on there. I probably would forget somebody, so I don't wanna do that. Um, but, uh, it's on the flyer and we're gonna be having some little cards printed up and they're already here, but they need to be, uh, processed. So, um, if you wanna help get the word out and, uh, I think it'll be a really good fun day. So, that's what I've been working on. That's what I got going on. So with that, let's start over to my left. Keith?
Um, okay, so I'm gonna start with Terry's report as a staff report.
Oh, that's right.
So, uh, he's at the International Association of Chiefs of Police Institute for Youth Engagement in North Carolina. That's where he's at. So we've had approximately thirty people apply for the police officer position. So we're gonna interview twelve candidates Monday. So hopefully we'll get a good candidate out of that. Uh, the police car we ordered with last year's money is sitting, waiting to get its lights and sirens and all that kinda stuff on it. And then the two cars ordered with this next year's money, uh, they're sitting at St. Helens Auto Center waiting to get their stuff put in. And then their body cameras arrived last week, so they'll be deployed, uh, soon and they'll get training on those. So our officers will have cameras on their bodies from now on, for a while anyway, and see how that works out. Gonna test it for a year. Uh, Matt Molden, our sergeant, is off on short-term disability, so now we're another policeman down again. Uh, he's applied for that grant to, uh, for, remember the, the grant for the police officer for two years or three years, whatever it was?
Yep.
Uh, for the school resource officer, so, uh, that's been put in. Helped with Jenny also. And Anthony Boswell, who's at the police academy right now, he's doing very well, so he should be graduating soon. And, uh, that's about it from Terry. So, um, today, uh, I'm gonna tell you a story because you're probably, I know John's gonna hear about it anyway 'cause, um, I got in trouble again over at the Boise plant. Surprise, surprise. Uh, a couple of the new tenants were there today and, um, I wanted to show them the training center building. And so, uh, well, I had shorts on and a couple of them had shorts on. And so anyway, so I guided them through, on the road, through the mill property because that's the only way to get to that training center is through Cascades property. So, anyway, uh, that went all through the mill that I was running wild and rampant on Cascades property again and whatnot. So I showed, uh, the new tenants the training center and they're very interested in it in probably about a year or a year and a half, something like that. So, um, maybe, you know, if we get it fixed up, we do have a tenant for it down the road. So that's, uh, update on that. Um, and, uh, I say Cascades has a new CEO as of today. So, uh, one of the other issues, we found out, we had PGE there, uh, yesterday and we found out that electricity can't be split, which I mentioned earlier. So, uh, we're gonna have to, or they're gonna have to work out some sort of agreement with Cascades to get them through probably nine months to a year until they get the power split down there and whatnot. But, uh, the PG guys, they, they said it's not a big issue or anything and, uh, they have a lot of other places to do that. And, uh, they said that, you know, I mean, they have the, I mean, they can service whoever they want for customers, you know. It's not something that Casc-, even though it goes through their meter, it isn't something that Cascades gonna say, no, I'm not gonna do that.
Sure.
So we need to talk to them about that. And then, uh, I think we also need to talk to them sort of about policies for, for us, the city, at least a few of us on the city, you know, like since I'm over there doing work and Neil does work occasionally and whatnot. Uh, if we're on, in fact, I think it even talks about the, the roads in their lease that, that's kind of common ground. 'Cause it was when Boise Cascade was there, that was common ground and whatnot. So, uh, we need to either, you know, make sure that we can go on common ground or I can understand going in their buildings and all that kinda stuff, that we need their permission and, and guidance and all that. But, but the roads over there, I mean, if we have to go to a road to get something that's ours, we have to go to it, you know. So those are things that we need to maybe form our own policies about.
They are our tenants.
So, anyway, uh, like I say, and then, uh, I, I've got a lot of other things to talk about over there, but it's some other time when we're at another meeting and I'm, I'm making the list, so I'll bring you guys up to date here in the near future. Just about things that I've noticed over there.
We, the council needs to be informed.
Yes.
And I, and people, the councils come to me a couple of times saying, what's going on over there? And I, the only thing that I can say is, well, you gotta ask Keith. Well, I don't know if that's really the appropriate, the appropriate, uh, way to go about this. Is what I'd like to say is you've gotta ask John or you've gotta ask Neil and Sue, uh, because they're on the staff. They're the staff that should be doing this and they're the, they're the staff that should be, uh, there. And I think you should be working hand in hand, but-
I, I do work with John and Neil quite a bit, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think that's, yeah.
I mean, I, how often do I come talk to you, John? Three times a week?
At least, yeah.
Yes. Um, but we do look forward to, um, on a future meeting, whether August or the first of September, when we have a work session, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about this.
And, uh, just, I know we talked about this earlier today and as a reporter, I'll, I'll mention this now, is that, uh, I know it is, it's, you know, everybody's got their own ideas and whatnot about hiring that extra building inspector, but it could be something that maybe our current building inspector takes on sort of a job of being sort of a compliance officer on the mill site and doing inventory over there and making sure that what's going on over there. Because right now, there's lots of stuff going on over there that I don't know about and things are disappearing and I have no idea what's ours or what isn't ours and so-
Have we taken photographs of, of things at least?
I have some and I'm, from now on, whenever I go anywhere, I'm taking photographs, yes. But, yeah, it needs to be, like I say, I mean, it would be nice if we had a staff person that was actually holding Cascades accountable also because they're doing things and they don't pull permits. They don't even ask us whether they can do them or not and they're, they're leasing it, so.
You just said a key thing. We need a staff person. We need a staff person to be doing that.
Yes. I agree. I mean, yeah, I'm, been full-time over there.
So you're saying maybe a full-time staff person as a building inspector, Keith? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that person could, I mean, could do something like that, at least.
We had this discussion earlier, yes?
That's a possibility. At least part-time anyway, you know? Maybe full-time to start with.
Okay. You got anything else, Keith?
We'll talk about it next meeting.
It is tabled.
So, okay, that's enough for me.
Hi Jenny. You hear the core out.
Long day. Um, I told Jacob, but the, not everybody hears, 'cause I don't usually go into planning commission stuff, but they've been putting in a lot of late nights. They've had a lot of development. Jenny talked about a lot of multi-family units that are in the process. And I just wanna appreciate that team because it's a courageous effort, because it's quasi-judicial and it's a hearing and they volunteer and they come here and they're here until eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock at night. And they don't always make decisions that make people happy and they have to stand behind them, you know, under pressure. And these are just community members. I appreciate their service and their thoughtfulness and their thoroughness. And, you know, at eleven o'clock at night, it's hard, but I do appreciate that they do the due diligence and try to make sure that everything is followed. I just wanna make sure that they knew that we do appreciate their effort. I wanna remind people that we won't meet again before Relay for Life, which is July twenty-nineteen, twenty-ninth. It is only twelve hours this year, so you don't have to sleep on the fifty-yard line, even if you want to. Um, super fun. Um, the fair opened today, so, you know, take advantage of Columbia County Fair. Um, uh, that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you, Jenny. Doug?
Well, what'd you think of our Parks report today?
Like-
And so what I really liked about that is, is that we had our new chairman and our vice chairman steps up to the microphone and gives their report. Three or four years ago, that would have never happened. It would have been the same old, the same person doing the same report, doing the same kind of thing over and over again. And it's what we're doing with our commissions and committees is building leadership and we're building community, uh, members, taking responsibility with, uh, the committees and commissions. And I was, I was thrilled about that. I just, I thought that was a, a very good thing. And I like, so I like that rotation that we implemented, uh, on our committees and commissions. Actually, Baggett's, uh, testimony this morning regarded sidewalks. Uh, and, uh, then we heard just recently, uh, more testimony about sidewalks and safe passage. And, uh, we just, I, we, we've gotta let our public know that we're on top of that, especially on Vernonia Road and, uh, that connects to Campbell Park and throughout the whole area. I, I remember coming, going back to Public Works after that meeting that went till eleven o'clock at night. And either they, when, uh, Sue and Neil came back, uh, you know, the first thing I, I said is, is that there was testimony about that and we need that. And their response was, we're already all over it. And so, you know, I can't say that we are moving forward on our, on our sidewalks. Uh, also on Parks in their, in their report, they, they, there was this idea of people looking for volunteers. And the volunteers, the, the kids in the school, uh, need to be approached. And, uh, hopefully in our, with our, uh, with our youth council and with our, our Parks Commission, possibly we can do something with the, uh, some kind of presentation with the faculty and the, uh, council staff at, at the high school to encourage kids to, uh, get involved with the, with the park system especially. Um, oh, and then, uh, and then I, this isn't a, this isn't a, uh, kind of a repeat, but it's Keith, Wayne gave me a call and wanted to meet with me. And I felt that, I felt that that action was- And I felt that, I felt that that action was a bad reflection on the council. And I know you apologized today, and I thought that that was very admirable of you to speak into the microphone and apologize to, to him directly for anything that he, he felt kind of threatened or didn't feel good about. So, I appreciate you doing that. And I, when I, when I talked to Wayne, I, I, and then the mayor also apologized. And what I'd like to do is see if we can, as a council, write a letter and say that, you know, that, that those things won't, those things won't happen again. And part of that, part of that was a misunderstanding, I believe, of who was going to do what. But the one thing that I was a little upset about is that, when, when the public, the head of Public Works was, the co-head of Public Works was told to do something, that's when I got another call. So, it, it isn't, it isn't about you, it's about just the way we go about doing things. So, I'm not teeing off on you or anything, but when I get a call from my department heads going, what is this? I'm, I was told to do this and whatever, and I, I just go, hold on, hold on. So, we have to, I think we have to really make certain that we, the whole entire group is part of a decision that goes against the norm. And we did that tonight. I mean, we did that tonight and it worked out well. So, this is just something as a, as a reminder to the entire council, and I'm not pointing it to you, Keith, I'm using that as an example, okay?
I understand that, but at the meeting, my understanding was, is that I thought you directed Jacob and Susan, Sue and myself to talk to Wayne and come up with a solution.
Yeah, but you came up with the solution. The group did not come up with, if it's a solution, it would be to the council to, as a recommendation. And that if you, if you come up with a recommendation and ask what Sue would have done, she would have brought a recommendation to the council, brought it before the council, and the council would have decided.
I thought that's what we did.
But you told her to strike the, the, you know, the.
I asked her if she, if we could strike it.
We did kind of direct him a little bit, we did, I do recall that, it's on the minutes and on video, so it's there. So, but, so that's, you got any more, Doug?
No.
Okay, because we did.
Well, I've been kind of out of the loop, because I was in California, also feeling very old, because my son-in-law just retired from law enforcement after twenty-eight years. And then I came back to go to a funeral, it was great. I also got back in time to attend the swearing-in of the new district attorney over at the county, Jeff Oxyer. And I think he's gonna be doing a great job. He lives locally, he's young, so he's got a lot of time ahead of him. And he's got a really good background for this, so. As Jenny mentioned, the fair is this week. Oh, also, you talked about implementing rotation. Library Board just finished doing that again, they had their election of officers and are in compliance with the council direction. That's it.
Okay, so now. Yeah. Huh? Yeah. You don't have nothing for us, Jacob? That's amazing.
Nothing on the horizon that we should know about? That's what we're, that's what you're here for.
Okay, how about you? Yeah, there you go.
The one thing I would say is, I started here right before the Great Recession hit. And so, I could see how the activity was during the last boom. And it's starting to feel like that again.
Is it?
Déjà vu.
Yeah.
What I wanted to know.
Yeah.
So, in a, you're saying it's feeling like that in a good way or the bad way? Because he left it open, you know he did. You know, are you, are you the oracle predicting something? Or are you saying it's crazy busy like it was when I first got here? Because there was Skip and you.
The activity level.
Yes.
Yeah, the activity level is back to where it was back then, so.
And you got Jen to lean on, so I'm sure she's a great help too.
Hallelujah.
Yes, yep.
Jenny is a badass.
That's what we like, there's your report, that's his report, I like it, Jacob. Thank you, Jacob, yep.
I just wanted to thank both Jenny and Laura Ly for all the great work that they did on this urban renewal district. I think your presentations were awesome and the information was explained so well that even I could understand it, so. A really great job, you guys.
Thanks, Hugh, Neil?
Yeah.
Yep. Margaret?
I don't have anything to add tonight, thank you.
I know Matt's got, Matt's got something.
I just have two things, okay? One is that I emailed you all the two videos that were supposed to be in the presentation. They were only about four minutes long, I encourage you to watch them. They present ideas on both sides, from the soda tax perspective, from the industry side and also from the, the health benefit side. So, please take the time to watch those videos. And I would encourage you over this next month to reach out and Google, spend ten, fifteen minutes reading articles about Seattle that's going through this, read about Berkeley and Albany, California, Philadelphia, all the cities that have enacted soda taxes and the results of those taxes. And I will definitely bring back more information when we have our public forum to give you some more information about that. But as we hear testimony tonight from Ashley Baggett, who spoke up for the soda tax as a way for improvements for parks and sidewalks, as you hear testimony from others people about sidewalks that may need to be improvement, that is what I personally view this tax as, is an opportunity to improve those aspects, where we don't necessarily have a direct funding source as of right now to make a direct impact right away. And that's what I see the soda tax as, as that opportunity. So, that's all I'll say on that. The other quick thing that I wanted to, it's a little bit out of my wheelhouse, but out of my department. But a while ago, we went through a little short study of the courts department. And you kind of saw how many tickets we ride versus how many police officers we have and all the population, everything. One idea that we initially kind of approached a little bit, but was looking at hiring one additional officer, if the council was okay, if within workings of the schedule of, of probably working with Keith and Terry on this as well. But hiring an officer with the understanding that a portion of that time or a portion of specific time would be spent more on enforcements, writing tickets and violations, going down by the docks, going up and checking traffic on, on the speedy roads. So, I just wanted to at least kind of put that idea out there, if the council would be open to hearing what a possible recommendation could be, that would likely come from Terry and myself, kind of working out the financial aspect of, of what that would look like, schedule-wise, if that would work for Terry. But I wanted to throw that out there because I know it's, it's an issue right now with some of the testimony we've heard. And there's an opportunity there as well with the court department now kind of beefing up a little bit more in collections. So, I just wanted to throw that out there to see if the council would be open to hearing a little more of a recommendation or ideas behind doing something like that. Going through the process right now and hiring an officer, it's a perfect opportunity if we're looking at thirty applicants. Maybe there are two that fit the mold.
I think we're always open to hearing.
I, I, I like the idea of targeting, like especially Williams Group has showed up a couple, couple of times about speeders and sidewalks on the, again, it's the North Vernonia property. And for areas like that, Terry himself said the best way to cure that is put an officer there. And, you know, when you get complaints like that, it'd be nice to have a specific officer that you could say, you know, with the right tack, that's just the nature of the things, you know? I'm not looking to give everybody in our community a bunch of tickets, but, you know, we have to target those points for safety. So, I think it's a good idea, willing to listen to it.
Okay, I'll talk with Terry and kind of probably Keith as well and figure out how that might possibly work. And then come back to you in August, hopefully with some ideas. That's all I have.
I just have one comment. I've been here for sixteen years and I have never seen such quality in our council, in our staff, in the hiring of our consultants, in every, everybody in Public Works and the city hall and the library. We just have stellar staff. And I believe that the leadership has been so, it's necessary to have good leadership in order to get the good staff that we have. And I'm, you know, and we have good staff that hires great consultants. And, and we saw the consultants tonight that are just excellent. And, and they are moving St. Helens forward. And we've come so far, I would say in the last five years, that I'm just very impressed and I'm proud to be a part of the city. I just wanted to say.
And it's all on record.
We can play it back.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Doug.
You tapping, tapping me there? Pile on on the kudos for the, the Urban Renewal Agency, that's a, it's a landmark thing. It's been ten, ten years in the making and it's gonna offer tools and, and the ability to partner with developers and make things happen in our community. So, the concern about the, the docks and the boating community, and it's fairly alarming. It's not really the first place I've heard it either. I've heard it directly from the association that they're not coming here anymore because of that. And that's a pretty powerful statement, that they, you know, Columbia Yachting Association, Association has upwards of twenty-five-hundred members. And, you know, they come and they visit. For some reason, the city of Portland has the ability to follow, they put, annually put out a cruise schedule, which we use and build our holiday events off of and things. And we know when they're coming, the city of Portland has the ability, according to the association, they clear the docks for them when they come. We don't seem to have that same set of tools in our toolbox. And there, there has to be some tools, whether through ticketing, enforcement, reservations, some possibilities to, to be able to.
We, we've done that, if we know they're gonna fill the docks, we've done that before, we roped them off.
What John is, John is saying is permits. And I have a big advocate for permits. And it seems like when I was in the yacht club and we did our cruising schedules, that, that the, we went through an association that we kind of had to file for those kinds of things. And, and they would, they would reserve it that way. But I could see the city here as permitting. Anytime I go up into the San Juans or anything, you would have to have a permit to get to a dock. And so, I could see that being implemented here to give our, give our code enforcement some, some leverage.
So, the constraints as we understand them don't allow us to be able to do that?
That is correct. And we've asked, the Marine Board had three representatives that came here about maybe three years ago or so. And we sat down with them, we asked them those questions, exactly those questions. And our agreement for having the docks here and being monetarily supported by the Marine Board does not allow us to do that. It does not allow us to reserve it for any particular group, does not allow us, and our municipal code does not allow us to force people off the docks who are legally there to allow another group to come in or another boater to come in.
Do you think we can change that?
Now, can we renegotiate with the Marine Board?
Not, well, not that I am aware of, but I mean, that's certainly a question we can ask the Marine Board if we could renegotiate those. But I, I, my guess is going to be that's going to severely affect our monetary support for the maintenance of the docks, but.
It's gonna be different, because situation has changed and especially changed in the Portland area to a point where, I mean, the Oregonian, the Willamette Week, it keeps doing these big things about these derelict boats out in the harbor. They, they have to step up to the plate at some time.
Right.
And they, well, the effects, the effects have changed from three to four years ago. It's, it, the homeless situation has been, is out of control now. And I totally agree with Tony, I think it is a tip of the iceberg.
Part of the issue too is all these, I mean, I don't know what John thinks, but I've heard these yachters don't all get along either. This association doesn't.
Yeah, yes.
And so, you know, it isn't all, like, they're all one big team.
One, one thing that I heard from a boater last year, that is a live-aboard boarder, boater, and used to live in Portland. And I think they got around that with sanitation rules that they were able to enforce on the boat about potable water and about wastewater disposal. Because a lot of those live-aboard boaters are not, don't have all the right hookups and can't prove that they're disposing of their sanitation and not dumping it in the river. And if they couldn't prove their dump, they could force them to move. And that's how they ran off a lot of Portland people.
Part of the problem is, is instead of moving, they just sink the boat, that's what's happened out here.
Oh, because it's not powered?
Yeah, I mean, they don't have power, they're not licensed, half of them aren't licensed. And if the Marine Board or somebody comes in and tells them, they're gonna.
How did the boats, how did the boats disappear out of the channel?
They tow them.
Eventually?
They're down in the bottom.
Yeah, they sunk. They were all three tied up and they hit these poles and just one at a time, bloop, bloop, bloop. And over about a two-week period.
One, you can still see the flying bridges still at Bupwater over there.
So, you know, it brings up a good point that, you know, a private, public marina owned by the city on our property would not be a bad idea, that gives us some control. And then you hire a, a real-life harbor master and you make it a quaint little town like we all want it to be, you know?
Well, that's what we'd have, and.
And not with urban renewal money, Laura Ly.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, but the, the docks aren't cheap, by the way.
Oh, I know, that's why I'd be public-private.
The, the Marine Board paid for every foot except seven feet, I believe.
There's forty-one feet and six inches, I believe, that we, that we are allowed. The city can do whatever we want, including taking a fee for a commercial boat or boats up to that length. And then seven and a half feet, I believe, is for fishing. And everything else is.
They paid for everything else, so that's why we can't do a whole lot with it.
Correct, yeah.
But for some reason, for some reason, it works in Portland and I, I would like to understand why, and I would like to explore that, so.
Right, yeah, if, if, if you know of the specific dock facility and can get a copy of.
You might be able to have a free permit, but, but still allow a permit.
I think there's different agreements and different, Rainier has a whole different set of rules and stuff down there too. I mean, they charge a fee and stuff for actually more.
They got.
But they may have paid more upfront and stuff too, so I don't know.
Right, and they also got, they, they also got fined or else their support got taken away because of the fees that they were charging. And they were total, they were against the.
Well, the mission of the Marine Board is to promote, you know, healthy, active cruising and yachting. And that isn't what's happening. I mean, they're going against their mission by allowing what they've allowed. And so, you know, that just needs to be confronted, and I think it needs to be confronted through a municipality. And I think we are a, a test case for that.
And I know for a fact that Tony will get plenty of people who would testify on behalf of what is happening out there. She and Brad, especially her, would talk to a lot of people, so.
I don't think it's an issue of answering the question, is it a problem? It, it's a problem.
Oh, yeah, no one disagrees.
The Marine Board's gonna say it's an enforcement issue.
Yeah, well, then that's where they should step up, because they give the Marine Patrol a ton of money every.
They do, yes, they do.
They should say, you guys start enforcing the stuff or cutting you off.
Yeah, exactly. The problem is, is they ticket every other boat out there though, when you're just out there walking on ya.
See what you started, that was a good discussion though. Doug, you wanted one more before we get out of here?
Oh, yeah, I, thank you for, remember that.
Yes.
Uh, we, with the Matt's proposal with the soda tax and then all of a sudden I, you know, I, I kind of like went forward with, uh, 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 doing a public forum and then all of a sudden a date came out and I didn't have really time to think about it. I'm gonna move that back a month or so because I'd like to do a little research on that. And Matt himself said that he's got a catalog of, uh, material to read through. Um, I'd like to get to the schools and see what some of the PTAs have to, encourage the PTAs to come down and do some of their research and see what they're doing. I'd like to get to see what the school board is, what they're, uh, uh, what they have to say. This is all about kids.
I think Matt's been talking to them.
Can I, can I respond?
Yes.
Um, so I had a meeting with the, uh, with the school board. I first met with the superintendent with Ashley Baggett. Uh, and then we, uh, got a, a meeting set up with the city or with the school board, um, where I did a similar presentation to what you saw tonight, um, a little less expensive. And then Ashley gave a presentation to the school board. Um, when we initially spoke with the superintendent, the superintendent was a little hesitant. Um, and his reason for that, he said, was because the school board is gonna be going out for another bond shortly. And they were afraid of the PR, um, relations as far as the public approving more money for them when now they would get taxed for buying soda at Safeway. Um, when we, when I presented to the school board, uh, I received from all of them happy smiles. And yeah, this is great. We'll talk about it more and we'll look at signing a letter of support. Um, I was fully expecting a letter of support, uh, received last week, but when I emailed the executive assistant, uh, she informed me that the, uh, school board had met in a work session, uh, the previous day and were not willing to sign a letter of support at this time.
And then I would go a step further and I'd get to the real meat of the issue and get to the PTA. And the PTA members are the ones that have kids that go to school. They're the ones who are gonna be invested in this. And sometimes the school board people are people who are somewhat removed from it. And so I think, I think the whole idea of just getting a little more, I'd wanna get a little more information from, I'd love to go to a PTA meeting and just, and just sit and just present it like you presented or have you presented at PTA.
I would be happy to.
Needs to get out more effectively. Because all of a sudden, this is looking like, whoa, whoa. You know, we just get this information in and then all of a sudden, it's like next week or the next meeting, we're going to be voting on it. Uh, I, I, I don't feel comfortable with it. I feel that we do need a public forum and I think that further out that it would be good. Sorry if I'm.
No, 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 no. No, I'm just tired. That's all.
October would be.
Well, what do we have? A month and a half right now as it sits? A month and a half, right? The first week of September will be a month. Yep. Okay. So, uh, if you'd like to sit down Doug, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you.
I just stopped talking about, I was listening to every word you had to say.
With a smile on your face.
I was.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm a happy person Doug.
Okay.
It was nothing personal towards you. I was not talking shit about you or nothing.
No, that's okay.
Okay?
Asked for a little more time.
And I asked, is a month and a half enough time? And if it's not, then.
That's good.
Do you want it in October? We'll have it in October. It's not, okay. I just was stating that a month and, it's a month and a half out. So, okay, first week of October. Can we set that? Thank you. Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you.